Hi, Jenny. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the final Board of Selectment meeting for this term. And I guess we'll -- it's okay. That'll throw me off.
You're going to do it twice?
It doesn't take much to throw me off. You all set? Thanks. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the November 23rd. Sorry?
I'm just in a mood, I guess, today. I'm so far away from you guys.
I know. We do get along, despite what it looks like. Welcome to this final meeting of this term of the Board of Selectmen. And like we always do, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of September 9th, 2021?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of September 9th, 2021 with the changes that we received from select person Oberlander.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion. And for the record, the changes are primarily editorial, typographical, just correcting some of the language from the recording.
Okay. All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes. Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of November 9th, 2021?
Lauren Raven, so moved. Jill Oberlander, second.
And Fred Camillo, all those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes. Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Before we go on to the updates, we have a very short agenda today. So you normally start with our updates, but since this is the final meeting for select person Oberlander, we wanted to salute her for her service the past two years. Normally, you get a day, but you already had a day, and there's a rule that you can't get more than one day in town. So we did--
Please tell that to my children.
But we do have a certificate of special recognition and recognition of your dedicated service these past two years to the board. I've enjoyed working with you, and certainly you've helped push a lot of things forward. And even when we didn't agree, which is often something, you know, at times, but it was actually good because it showed people that this board wasn't a rubber stamp for anything. And so I truly appreciate it and all your counsel the past two years, and look forward to you still working with us going forward. I know you have lots of passions in town here, like task force and sustainability, and I hope that you won't go away on those things. So with that, I wanted to present you with a town of Greenwich flag, this certificate, a bottle here that you can't drink right now.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Lauren. Give the final report for the minority select person. So bear with me. It seems very -- this is Jill Oberlander for the recording, and having listened to some of the recordings, I know I have to enunciate a little bit better. It seems very fitting that my final report as the minority select person should come two days before we celebrate the Thanksgiving holiday. As we all contemplate gratitude, I have my own thoughts to add on this topic. First, I am supremely grateful for the honor of serving the people of the town of Greenwich on this board for two years and in other elected positions for an additional 10 years. Public service has been my calling, both professionally and, like many in this community, as a volunteer, and I thank you for your trust in me. Second, I would like to thank my many colleagues over the years who have made my time in town government so enjoyable. Members of this board, the RTM, BET, and the many boards and commissions that I've had the great fortune of meeting over the years. Their intelligence, expertise, collegiality, and dedication to the work of our community is unparalleled. I have to actually shout out to -- I hope Don is behind the door today, even acts as an image consultant at times. Finally, I would like to thank those individuals who actually do the work that make the elected officials look good. The numerous dedicated town employees, some of whom are in the room today, and the volunteers that serve, often without the recognition and thanks they deserve. I know that if I start naming people, I will surely leave someone out, and that's never my intent. So please know that my experience of excellence spans departments, governing bodies, and various committees. Please also know that it has been my distinct pleasure to work with you and that your contributions and efforts are noticed and appreciated. In preparing for my last report, I took the opportunity to revisit my first remarks, back when it seemed we were in another world. As you may recall, I focused on the three Es: economy, education, and environment, and I hope you will indulge me in a little review and wish for the future. I've talked a lot about our successes on environmental issues throughout these past two years, and also about how much work remains. These issues need to be a priority this next budget term, and I hope the first selectmen's budget will include funding to both add a staff person to cover sustainability and energy, which I might add will pay for itself through cost savings, and to prepare Greenwich for future allocations in infrastructure funds. We can't be shovel-ready for infrastructure improvements if we haven't done the necessary planning work. I've also talked a lot about education and the need to come together to support our teachers and administrators. This was not the conversation on education that I expected to have going into this term. The pandemic changed things and opened my eyes to the needs of our youth and young adults, namely, to be in school, in person, learning with their peers and adults who can identify and address social issues. Anxiety, depression, and maladaptive coping are at record-high levels, and we all need to work together to ensure that our community children are safe and well-cared-for. That extends to our college-age children and young graduates as well. They're facing unprecedented challenges, as we all know. Knowing that there are different opinions on how to respond to the challenges of a COVID world, I ask that we not get distracted by divisive tactics, name-calling, and threats, but rather band together for the good of our children and our community. The third E, economy. Greenwich residential real estate exploded during the pandemic, at the same time many businesses suffered. I advocated for a pedestrian corridor along Greenwich Avenue in summer months, and now we have outdoor dining and more to come. There is a lot of opportunity to do more to revitalize our community, and in addition to the Reimagine Committee and the efforts that they're promoting, I encourage this board to take a step back and develop a well-thought-out economic development plan and one that applies throughout the town. And finally, a fourth E presented itself, which took on a more important focus over the last two years: equity. We need equitable systems and situational awareness to how we might experience things differently from others. The work on these issues has only just begun, and I hope this entire board will be committed to seeing it through. With that, and my thanks, I conclude my report and wish all of you a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. And again, thank you for your hard work the past two years. And as I listen to you name a lot of those initiatives, and I'm very happy that we've done some of them and in the process of doing some others, and look forward to working on some that we haven't gotten that far on. But we've -- a lot's happened in two years, and we're proud, and certainly your part in it was very instrumental. And again, even when we didn't agree, you know, you come to a better conclusion, I think, when everybody is bringing their different views to the table. Not everybody agrees, because then you don't come to, I think, a great product. So thank you. That's why we have these boards, and we have differing viewpoints, so--
And as I return to resident status and not a member of the board, now I can copy you and Lauren on my morning musings. We'll get all of my ideas.
Exactly. We could actually meet in private and talk about town stuff now, which we've been prohibited because of these rules. So, but thank you. And again, we look forward to your service. The past few weeks have been action-packed. We've had really a beautiful Veterans Day, walked down the avenue. It was a beautiful day when we were in the sun. And then that night, we went to Byram and had a great event there, a ceremony, as we always do. And then, speaking of Byram, we did the ribbon-cutting. If you haven't been down there yet, it's a beautiful new station, and it's fitting for that part of town that's really getting a resurgence now, and something we're very, very, very proud of and still working at to make it even better. And I see Joe Kantorski is here, and Liz, and they're smiling, and they've had a great part in that. And there's still much to do, and you're leading the way, so we thank you. Jill, you mentioned certain things. The bike task force that I put together a few months ago is meeting, and I had a visit from four members of the Junior League, and they had a great idea that will tie in with this, so about helping kids get to work who don't have any transportation. So they're trying to link up spots in town where we can have a bike route and putting these bike racks there. But they're doing a really deep dive into it, so they're in touch now with the bike task force and working together. So those points on the board we talked about, hopefully we'll see in the next six to eight months. So we're hoping that when warm weather arrives, we'll have a few routes ready to go. So thank you to them for stepping up. This past Sunday, I got my first pickleball experience. I actually had a lot of fun. As you know, it's when you get a baseball player on a golf course or a tennis court, it doesn't really always go together, but I really enjoyed it, and I look forward to getting back there and playing more often in the years to come. What else do we have here? We had, again, the flood area tours continue throughout. We have the opening, we had the opening this past week of the FEMA Center in Glenville, and still, we're going around town. People are reaching out. If you do have an issue in any parts of town, remember first to email publicworks@grantedct.org, then copy me and Amy and Jim, and we will come and see you. And we've been doing that weekly, and we'll continue to do that. It's a long, it's a big task, and it's a long road ahead. Every mayor and every first selectman I've spoken to says that their infrastructure, which was built sometimes 80, 90, 100 years ago, just can't take it, the development that's occurred. And with each storm, and these big storms are getting more and more frequent, it's exacerbating the problem. And certainly, that's one of the reasons why I'm going to be meeting with the governor here on December 3rd. Bunch of issues, but one of them is to get a moratorium from the state on 8-30G, because that's exacerbating what is already a big problem. And it's not a Greenwich problem. It's many towns. And we're, you know, we're going to show the governor, and I think he already knows this because he's said it already, that we are working really hard on affordable housing, and we're making inroads, and we'll continue to do that. But having this law hanging over our heads where a developer can come in and basically threaten to break zoning is not good. And as I've said over and over again, when you take away soil and replace it with impervious surfaces, the water has no place to go. And so we have to have a balance. We have to show we're working hard to responsibly and reasonably address the affordable housing issue, but we don't want to make a situation that's already hurting our residents worse. So I will be meeting with the Greenwich delegation and the governor on the 3rd about that. We have the swearing-in on December 1st next week at 5:00 at the Teen Center, so hopefully all that can make it will come down and join us. We also have the annual tree lighting, December 3rd at 4:45 in front here, so it's always a fun thing. Last year, during the pandemic, Parks and Rec did something really cool in the back there and set up something that was, you know, pandemic-friendly, and it was fun. But I think this year, we're kind of going back a little bit of what we used to do before, thank God. So it should be fun. Hopefully, we'll see you out there, too. And with that, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Have a safe one, and hopefully we'll have a much easier 12 months ahead than we've had in the last 24. With that, I'll turn it over to select woman Raven.
Thanks, Fred. Thanks, Jill. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and thankful, Jill, for your service. We first met 10 years ago on the RTM, serving on the Finance Committee, and your contribution to the town is appreciated by many, and especially me. So I wanted to just thank you for your service to the town, and I know that we'll have continued dialogue and have your input on things moving forward. Just a brief update, the Reimagine Committee, we are trying to still attract people to our business districts. So we're putting together what we're going to call a holiday stroll on Greenwich Avenue, working with some of the retail establishments, just to promote things that Thursday night, December 9th, when some of the businesses are open later in general. So stay tuned for that. And to piggyback, Fred, on your comment about development over the past few weeks, getting a lot of emails and concerns from residents about development that is going into their neighborhoods. And my suggestion, I know that planning and zoning always welcomes neighborhood input, and it's hard to stay abreast of every development that's going on in town. I do my daily walks, and even in my neighborhood, there's, you know, four teardowns that are, you know, coming in with new two, three stories where it was a one-story building. So my advice is to stay abreast of planning and zoning's agendas, and if you are a neighbor abutting a development that you have a concern about, please attend the meeting and make sure that your voices are heard. And that's my update.
Thank you, Lauren. Jill?
Continuing work on transition plans with sustainability. Looking forward to having Janet Stone-McGreggen come in and go on the sustainability. We'll, for now, continuing the first Thursday of every month, 11 to 12:30 by Zoom, although that this committee will figure it out going forward, and also just staying abreast of some of the local issues that we're not going to vote on, I guess, today. Some of them will be put off, so that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Old business, the Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund Second Read has been pulled and pushed off to the December 9th meeting, the first meeting of the new term. So with that, we'll just go on to new business, which is only going to be one item because the road closure was also pulled for the menorah lighting on the 5th. So with that, we just will have the Eugene Morlock Memorial Park renaming resolution. We have Parks and Recreation Director Joe Sisliano and Building, Construction, Maintenance Superintendent Al Meneli here. So thanks, guys, for joining us.
Thank you. Jill, thank you for your service, for your work with you. This morning, we're here to try to do a little housekeeping.
Do you turn on the mic?
Excuse me? Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you. So this morning, we're here to try to do a little housekeeping. During all of this discussion about the rink and the positioning of the new rink on the property, and it was, even though we kind of knew it was there, the Eugene Morlock plaque was there in the flagpole, we did some research. The Law Department, Abby Wilders here, did extensive research to see whether this was ever really named and formally put in front of the Board of Selectmen so that it could be placed on the land records and on the town's Parks and Recreation website. It doesn't look that -- we've looked extensively. Abby can comment on this, but she did a position paper based on a request from select woman Raven. We did some research. We searched the files. We searched the deed. We searched anywhere we could possibly see that, and it looks like the dedication plaque and the flagpole was dedicated in 1989 by Francis Keegan, former director and the veterans associations. But it was never followed through, and it never got through to the Board of Selectmen so that it can officially appear as a town-named property. So that's what we really want to do here today. So using some of the information that we collected for the rink, we have a survey that was done by the Langen Associates on October 22nd of 2001. And that survey represents that there are several parcels, but the total parcel was 13.41303. It's in the, it's in your packet. So that's the entire parcel, including the area that's outlined in pink there where the veterans' memorial trees are currently located. Now, the little history behind that is that Eugene Morlock was a custodian at the Barm School when it was open. He raised the money to plant those trees for the veterans that went to Barm School, who were killed in various wars, and the trees exist there. Those trees that are in that pink designated area are plotted by the survey, so they have longitudinal, latitudinal lines. They're exactly where they're located. It's exactly there on the map. And that acreage is 0.64782 acres. So what we're really asking today of the board is that we're asking the board, vote on naming the entire parcel Eugene Morlock Park. That's the 13 acres, 13.4. And then we're also asking the Board of Selectmen to take another vote to say that the 0.64782 acres where the trees are located would be permanently dedicated, which means that it cannot be touched. Okay? We're asking that. We want to put it on the land records, even though I think Frank Keegan was well in intent to do what he did, and he meant, you know, he was purposely, it never really got to through the Board of Selectmen. So right now, none of this, except for his intent to name it the Morlock Park, which it is, in good standing, is there. But we want to be able to put it on the land records that it's named the Morlock Park, and we want to be able to put on the land records that the area outlined in pink where the memorial trees would be permanently dedicated, that would not be touched, you know, in perpetuity. And that's pretty much what the goal of today's meeting is, is to make sure that we get this recorded properly, it becomes part of the land records, the maps, and this resolution with the vote, and that we will be able to put this on the land records, demonstrate it in the town properties as named the Morlock Park, in the Parks and Recreation website, et cetera. There are also a few other items here that, you know, there's also, we've had some discussion, myself, Alan, met with some of the folks, Mike and Bob Kristoff, Liz Eckert, Mr. Pacora Senior, who I don't know if he's listening in, but he's not here today, to talk about, you know, the construction of the rink. The community's asked that we also look at that third paragraph or the last paragraph. We would limit some structure over the parking lot. So that's a community ask, and I don't think it's one that we can't accomplish, because we're looking at other locations on the property for the rink, for the rink, not on the parking lot site. So that's something I think we can easily ask, and I think the Board of Selectmen can give as far as accommodating that request, because we're not considering building the rink at that, on the parking lot location. So what today's accomplishments was, all the other issues about the rink, size, location, road, you name it, will all be in front of the Planning and Zoning Department at the end of, in the middle of December. There's a pre-application that's been filed by Alan and our project manager to go in front of Planning and Zoning. So all of those other issues will be talked about at the Planning and Zoning pre-application meeting. So what we really want to do today is just really trying to clean up and take, just to the next step, the intent of the former first Parks and Recreation Director and the community to get it done, to get this really, you know, get the naming correct, get it on the land records, get the designation of the permanent designation of the locations of the trees, get that on the land records, and to explain to the community that we really will not build a skating rink over the parking lot, and that, but we need these other opportunities for paving, reconfiguration, insulation, drainage, lighting, and possible expansion of the parking lot, but a structure would not be, we refrain from putting a structure over the parking lot. That's what we're here to do today. We can answer some questions. Alan's here. There's people from the community that have been long involved with this project. You know, there's some veterans here. There's the Kristoff Brothers that are here. Bob Kristoff, I'd like to recognize him, and Mike Owen, because they came to my office, and they gave me a great history of this location. And Bob, I have to commend him, actually was the individual who made all of those little concrete monuments where the placards identify each tree and each person. So these folks have a great history of the location, what was done, and the purpose. So if there's some questions, I'm sure they'd be glad to add their comments.
Yes, thank you. I'm sure there'll be lots of questions here. When is that P&amp;Z pre-app date?
December 21st. What is it, December 21st?
December 21st, so everybody knows when it gets there for your questions. I'm sure there'll be lots of questions. Joe, thanks so much for that. I appreciate all the work that's going into this. You know, I'm just as guilty as everybody else. I mean, I grew up here and played baseball at that field since I was a kid. My Aunt Rosie started taking me to the skating rink, which was not Dorothy Hamel in 1972, and it was just a slab of ice, and it was done piecemeal. So of course, it was done not to the standards that we'd want today. And unfortunately, it's fallen behind all the other rinks in Fairfield County and probably in the state as far as condition and state-of-the-art comparison. So also, there's a baseball field here dedicated to my late friend Sal Strazza. I know there's veterans advocates here, and there's hockey advocates, but I don't see any baseball ones, so I'll be that advocate today to make sure that, you know, Sal's memory and the baseball field is protected. And I know that you've always supported that.
In our research, we found out the Strazza Field naming was, did go through the Board of Selectmen, and also the Hamel project did go through that. So you are correct. This--
Yeah, thank you.
They're there, yeah.
No, I appreciate that. What I'd also, hopefully, when we could take this opportunity to not only do this permanent naming opportunity and to get it in the land records, but also, and to protect the memorial, but also to enhance it. And I know, I thank you and Alan for being open to ideas about, you know, maybe putting up some proper signage there and really highlighting what is a wonderful memorial. It's always, unfortunately, the Memorial Day celebrations and ceremonies are always at the same time as other ones, and so we only got to go to the first time ever during the pandemic. And standing up there and looking down over, standing at those trees and looking down over the parking lot really is beautiful, and it's one of the more underrated ceremonies. And I just hope that the veterans' organizations can get together in the future and space out these ceremonies so that everybody can attend them. It's not, to me, if it's just a few people from Byram or a few people from Old Greenwich going there, we would love everybody to be able to attend every one of these things because it's important, and especially for people who have family members that are memorialized there. So hopefully, as we go forward, you know, some of these suggestions, and certainly your agreement with some of the suggestions that have been made to enhance this would really go a long way. And I know Sil Pacora's not here, but I know he's been wonderful in his advocacy. So I know there's lots of questions and comments, so I'll turn it over to my colleagues before we go to the audience.
I don't have questions. Mine are more comments. So Jill, I don't know if you want to ask your questions first, or I can go with my comments?
Doesn't matter.
So first, I want to thank everyone that brought this to our attention. David Wall, Don Sylvester, all the legwork that you did to produce many, 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 many pieces of document and emails, et cetera. And then Abby in the Law Department for combing through it all and coming to the conclusion, and Joe and Alan for taking in all the community input and really coming forward and putting together this proper designation. And, you know, hopefully, we can have another robust dedication, so it's not just this vote at the Board of Selectment meeting to designate the area. And I-- the Board of Selectment meeting to designate the area. And I actually skipped the Old Greenwich event and stay in Byram. So happy to continue to do that. It's really special. So, you know, thanks for everybody involved and happy that this is coming to a conclusion.
Thank you, Lauren. Jill?
Yes, I echo Lauren's thanks for all of the community members who raised these concerns and brought us to this point. I did have a couple of questions, one of which is to, I guess, Joe. There had been a question of whether the Board of Parks and Rec had taken this up.
Yes. The Board of Parks and Recreation at their September 30th meeting had a discussion about it and did acknowledge to move forward, eight zeros, zero in a vote, to move this object, move this forward to the Board of Selectmen. So, yes.
Terrific. Thank you. And was that vote related to the dedication of the entire, so the entire zone will be considered the Eugene Morlock Memorial Park, right?
Yes.
The exterior, which is terrific. And then I think there was a question, the resolution has the Veterans Memorial Tree Grove as your, there were a couple of questions I had that I just want to make sure they were resolved. There was a question about the roots of the trees and if a tree needed to be replaced. And it's, does, is there, do the boundaries of that dedicated parkland provide sufficient space for replacement of trees?
Well, we met, we met out there and we, and we've given it, you know, sufficient space for the trees to flourish. And also, there is some room for replacement trees. We had Greg Kramer out there, the tree warden, he did look at the, the land and said that, you know, definitely, we've given enough space for the trees to kind of, to kind of grow and, and become more mature. And if we had to replace a tree, we could, we could figure out how to do that. If, even if it's an internal tree, you know, we could grind the roots out and put a new tree in. Those are all possibilities. So I feel very comfortable that the 13 trees that are there, if something were to happen to one of them, we could, we could do, we could easily replace it in kind and as close to the original site as, as possible.
Okay. And, and I guess I'll, I'll hear from the, perhaps from the, any, one of the representatives of the veterans organizations on whether they have comments on that. The other question I had was on the naming of the tree grove, and whether or not you considered naming it for the Byram veterans or otherwise, and whether there was a reason sort of for the naming of it.
It's been pushed back and forth between the Barm Veterans Memorial Tree Grove or the Veterans Memorial Tree Grove. Doesn't matter to me which way it goes. I mean, I think we can hear a little input from the community. And I think that would be great to have their consensus on, on the final naming. Either one will work.
I would appreciate that as well. And my last question is on your last resolved clause. So two questions on that. One is whether this is the appropriate format in order to permanently restrict construction, or whether it should be in the form of an easement or restriction, land restriction, that we would see the documents. That's a legal question. And the second is, does this language prohibit the building of charging state, you know, sort of an electrical, Alice shaking his head, no. But I'd, I'd like it to be clear that I recognize that there's no building, but it says any permanent structure. And I'm not sure how that would be defined. I want to make sure that the town has the flexibility to install energy efficiency in that location if possible.
Calum Minnelli, Superintendent, Billy Construction Maintenance for DVW. The clause was written in so that we could perform maintenance to the parking lot, and that maintenance would include the addition of electric chargers, which will be a requirement of the new rink, which the parking lot supports both the rink and Strazza Field. So-
I'm blanking on the name of the, the stations, the, you know-
Oh, the EV charger?
No, not the EV chargers. But if we wanted to put in a solar array to cap there, that's what I'm talking about. Not the EV chargers, but the solar array.
I'm not, we, we're, if, the new rink will definitely have solar panels on the roof. I don't know about building, the whole purpose was not to block the trees from any light. So that would be a tough one.
I see. Okay. So the purpose of no construction was to block the trees for the health of the trees?
Right.
And we know whether a solar array would block, would block the light?
Yeah, it would. Because a solar array, they have to be able to plow the lot, even though there's panels over the lot or a canopy over the lot, you still have to get trucks in there to plow it. And the, the array would have to be placed high enough to allow our plow trucks to get underneath it. And in, during maintenance of the lot, like when you grind and mill and pave, you have to get the milling machine under there. So the canopies are quite high.
Okay. Thank you for that, Al. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Joe. Just for a quick point of clarification. So the, the park, the whole 13 acres would be Morlock Park. And we'd have the Hamel Rink at Morlock Park. We would have Strazza Field at Morlock Park, sort of like Oriole Park at Camden Yards. Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure that we were, were clear on that. All right. I have, maybe a couple of other questions. But let's now, let's hear from some of the, Mr. Pacora, you have the mic, from some of the people who came here to voice their concern. Also, the, as you heard Joe say, we're, we really want the community to be, have consensus on the name of this. So we'll, we'll take your, your direction on that, whether it's Byram or Veterans Memorial Park, whatever it is, we will support that.
Good morning. I came to speak on just that. I want to support Joe and Sylvester Pacora Sr. My kid brother is there in the Memorial Park. And the only kids that got killed in the wars came from Barm School. So I didn't realize it at the time until Liz brought it to my attention that, so they're only Barm people. It should be named the Barm Veterans Memorial Park. Not saying just the Veterans Memorial Park, but it's not, it is the Barm Veterans. All right. And like I said, I, I support everything that Alan said with the, the lot, the parking lot. It's very important that you don't block the trees. Because at one point, they were thinking of putting the skating rink in the parking lot. So just keep in mind what Alan has brought forward. We worked hard on this, the, the committee of, I think, five or six of us, and just go by what they're telling you, because that's what's important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sal. Much appreciated. Anybody else who would like to speak or have a couple comments? You have the mic, sir.
Hi, Selectmen, Don Sylvester, Commander of the Byram Vets. Just a couple of things. You know, when we talk about Strazza Field, Strazza Field was dedicated in Eugene Morlock Park. The RTM at the time accepted $12,500 for the improvements to Strazza Field within Eugene Morlock Park. We submitted, Dave Wald could come up and speak on this maybe. I believe we submitted 12 points, 12 documented articles on various things pertaining to Eugene Morlock Park. I believe we gave them to Lauren. They were supposed to go to the Legal Department probably a few months ago. We've yet to hear the 12 points answered. And definitely in writing, you know, a generic, oh yeah, the, the Legal Department, you know, this is what they said. You know, you have to put it in black and white. You have 12 points. We want to see the 12 points answered. If it went to court, it would have to be answered. As far as, let me just capture my thoughts here a little.
Take it, John.
When we talk about the, the park, we know the park is 13 and a half acres. It's always been Eugene Morlock Park. The five segments, the play area, the parking lot, the skating rink, the ball field, and the, and the memorial grove, they're all within the park. Every park in Greenwich. You don't have separate designations for every little thing in a park. I mean, you know, why you're singling out these trees, they fall under the umbrella of a park. Nobody's going to go in there. The only threat that this park has had, has been from the town itself. And that's only lately, since they wanted to push this, push this building into this park. You know, why I appreciate when you say, yeah, you're going to protect the park. One year ago, almost one year ago to today, there were plans on the books for cutting down all them trees. There was, that we-
I, I, I want to stop-
Well, you'll get answered for me later.
Please stick to the facts, okay? You're starting to go into areas where I've never seen any things where the, the trees are going to be cut down. Please stick to the facts, and we will answer your, your assertions right now.
Those facts, okay, those facts have been, have been aired, and they've been shown. We've seen the drawings on it. There were plans to cut down trees. There were plans. They gave, they gave the contractors full rein to do whatever they wanted on that 13 acres, which was wrong right from the beginning. So that is documented. That is documented. When they were pushing that building, when they were pushing that building right back to the trees, one of, one of the designers even had their dumpsters in between the trees. We, we have the drawings of it. So look, I'm not here to argue with anyone. I'm just going to give you facts. You know, nothing-
Your 12, your 12 points, Don. Did, Abby, did you see that at all?
Do I comment on that?
Sure. Just let me ask the attorney while there.
Um, I believe they're part of an FOI request.
Okay.
The request for documents are being addressed by, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just wanted to get that answered before we go further. Thank you.
Yeah, I think some questions were submitted. They were asked to be submitted as an FOI request. The request contains requests for documents, which are appropriate, and some questions which may be handled differently. I know P&amp;Z is working on getting those documents. I consulted with them earlier this week, and we're trying to satisfy that request.
Okay, thank you. So just so we don't have, you know, email after email after email coming in, if you can just keep the, the two residents who keep sending these requests apprised to that, so that there's no accusations that people are not doing what they're supposed to do, or there's some conspiracy to, you know, go around things and keep things in the shadows. So just-
Of course.
So, because that's what we, I'm hearing. It's a small town. It's 63,000 people, but it's still small. And we all hear things. And so what people are saying, so it's, I'm not saying it's true, but obviously, but just so they're aware of what's going on at each steps. So if it's going to be, whatever the timeline is, so we don't have, if we think it's going to be three weeks, we don't have 63 emails in three weeks saying, why are you hiding things? What's going on? Because we've seen that before. So-
Of course, yes. And the FOI request is being addressed in-
Okay.
In, according to the proper process, as you know, we have dozens and dozens of FOI requests. So-
Yeah, I appreciate that.
They're all being addressed.
I appreciate that.
Yes, Joe.
Hi, Jill Oberlander. Abby, thank you. I just, for my own edification, when was the FOIA request submitted? And what do you think the anticipated timetable is for responding to it?
To tell you the truth, Mr. Sylvester, Mr. Wald could probably tell you better when it was submitted. I've received copies of so many emails, I don't know when they started.
Come on.
And the anticipated timetable for satisfying it?
Based on my conversations with Planning and Zoning, I, I think in the next couple of weeks, they should be able to-
So before the new year, you think?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wald will, can better address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
My name is David Wald, and maybe I can help a little bit. But first of all, I would like to thank you for going ahead and dedicating today the 13 acres in Eugene Morlow.
Designated.
What did you say?
No, I said designating.
Designated. Okay. I can do it in Norwegian. That's much easier. Anyway, and I've spoken to the Morlow family, and they're very much appreciating this.
Well, thank, thank you for your, your advocacy.
So, well, let's see. If we have to go ahead and do the 13 trees that was first dedicated in 46, in the 50s, or in 49, in the 50s, in the 60s, et cetera, I, I'm a little perplexed about the drawing there and the shape of it, and the margins to the trees. We have the original location of number 12, Chester Harrington Archer, who is, was the last descendant of President Archer. His tree was outside of that location. So-
Not within the 13?
No. It was moved in 52 to be with the other ones. But the purpose of the trees was to give shade to the playgrounds. And at that time, the playground was down in the expanded parking lot, together with the baseball hoops, which I've been asking for six months what happened to them.
That wasn't the purpose of the trees.
Not at all.
The purpose of the tree was to honor the veterans who died in World War II with the Vietnam War. Those, why is those trees are there?
We need, we need, the recording conferences, we need to-
Okay, I'm just quoting what the newspaper articles and the PTA said at the time when they talked about the first seven, expanded to the nine trees from World War II, that they were planted around the playground. So anyway, that's, that's newspaper articles. I don't think anybody is alive today who can report what happened. But anyway, and I was thinking of a, a situation that I've had with the town for several years now about the Civil War monument, and putting down a wreath and cutting the grass around the monument for Memorial Day, because that's when the Civil War. And, and I've been told that we can't do it because Parks and Rec has planted crocus with the garden club around the monument. Only last year, we managed to get the grass cut for Memorial Day at the Civil War monument. So I'm, I'm a little bit afraid of, of what this would be putting down as a rule, that we would have to do dedicating of the area around the Civil War, World War II, World War I, et cetera, all over town. And I think we, we're more than happy in the veterans organization that we keep Eugene Morlow for what he did for baseball, basketball, community activity, and the custodian at the school. And we keep all the memorials in our mind respectfully. And we don't sort of fence them in, in any way. And if I could just go over and talk louder from the drawing here. I have no idea why we're not going straight up here. I have no idea why we don't have included the path walk here and the drop off area for the park included in this. So I would, I would just respectfully ask that that part of the discussion we put aside, we include the veterans in the discussion. And then we, if needed, if the town feels it's required, we then sit down as a committee and we lay out the drawing. And I'm, I'm very surprised to notice the date on these surveys. If you look at, if you look at the original 19th of April drawing on the Dorothy Hamel Ice Rink, if any of you have it? April 19th is dated.
It's too, the font's too small for me to read. Thank you.
In our packet is 10/22/21.
Thank you.
Down in the right-hand corner, you see the April 19th?
Yes, I see it. Thank you.
Okay. If you look at the drawing for Eugene Morlow Memorial Park, what date does it? Down the right-hand corner, what date is it? The 21st.
Yeah, that's, well, I see the 19-
That's the old one.
Here's a copy.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Ours. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, ours.
Oh, there's two dates. There's one under boundary survey and then one above updated survey.
Yeah. I'm just surprised that the surveying company made one for the Dorothy Hamel rink on the nineteenth of April and then made a Eugene Morlow Park on the twenty-first of April. And it only comes to our attention six months later.
Okay, Alan, could you, thank, thank you. Could you answer that?
So, Langdon Survey Company was hired by SLAM, who has the contract to start the preliminary design of the skating rink. And one of the first things they had to do was survey the property, which they did in April. And at that time, because the park wasn't named, we called it Dorothy Hamel Skating Rink. That's what we were working on. In October, this past October, when this resolution was being written, we changed the name in anticipation to Eugene Morlock Memorial Park. We added the Veterans Grove and we add a revision date right here up in here of ten twenty-two twenty-one. So, it is the basis of the original survey in April, but we updated the names and everything in October to coincide with the resolution. Now, I could answer a couple of other questions about why the park, why the Veterans Grove didn't go all the way up? The town's property line is right here. And we do have the grove ending on the intersection of the town's property line. The reason why the grove didn't come around and follow the walkways is because if we have to do work on the parking lot or the curbs in the walkway, we have to be able to get in there, so we made sure that the trees were on the protected side. Now, we're working, obviously, we're not really here to talk about the skating rink, but we're working on other opportunities to try to push the parking lot further to the, to the south to keep even more distance away. But all this is part of this zoning application in the process that we go through thirty percent with the pre-app and application for final site plan approval. So, we are working on some of the other issues. The one other comment I'd like to make about plants, the bulldoze, the trees, during our due diligence, during our bid process, the town wrote an RFP to find an architect. We had thirteen responders, five presented here at the town hall. And we gave them, we told them, because we wanted to see their vision, their true, you know, their ideas and a clean piece of paper, we asked them to put the rink in the parking lot. And it was only a method for us to analyze what they were designing. Right after that conclusion, I was called to your office, David Wald, and both Don Sylvester showed up and made me aware, because I'm not from Greenwich, of the park. Before the contract was even signed, there was an addition to the contract that the trees, the memorial trees, and it gave a location, would not be touched or impinged upon. And SLAM Architecture then put fifty and seventy-five foot rings around each tree. Now, as we were going through with the committee, we were looking at other opportunities, just doing due diligence. And every time we put the rink in the parking lot, it interfered with the rings. And eventually, I believe it was, I want to say May or June, the committee voted not to put the rink building in the parking lot. So, we were just going through our normal process of design. These, this issue with the trees
Right, so the assertion that there was a plan to bulldoze
No.
Because we never heard that.
No.
And I know it was no one's intention.
Correct.
Thank you, and thank you for clearing up the property lines there, so does that answer your question, David? No?
Um, I can only say that I spoke to one of the architects who didn't get the job. Out of the five, four of them pointed out the Memorial Grove. SLAM did not point it out in their drawings where they placed the rink in the Memorial Grove. And they moved the, uh, the flagpole.
Excuse me?
Down the Memorial Grove.
Thank you.
Down on the side here to all on the baseball field, which I think was the original thought, to have an American flag at the baseball field overlooking the baseball field, so you could do the pledge of allegiance to the flag before the ballgame. I guess that was a tradition.
Yeah, I mean, it's, when we do, we played there and it's, it was close enough, so we looked at, I mean, we could see that, that flagpole. So, I, I, yeah, I never knew.
If you look at SLAM's winning proposal in the RFP, you will see that they have placed the rink all the way up to McKinney Terrace and they have taken the flagpole and moved it down to the baseball field. Secondly, I spoke to one of the, the architect firms that didn't get it and he checked with his construct, um, team and the team leader said he had asked a question to somebody here in town on their correspondence and was told, yes, we are aware of it, but if it has to be, we will remove them. It's only a political thing.
Who said that? Because I've, I've never seen that at all and I know that
I can only give you the email, because the person who spoke to them, he passed away that Christmas.
I understand.
But anyway, that is history and I can, as some of you know, I can give a little bit of that. But I would just like to say, can we please temporize that location and the site and the size until the veterans and everybody has had the time to talk to their members?
Well, you, again, if it's, the town line is there, we, you heard there, we can't go over if that's the town line.
Okay, let me just go in detail again then. You have two trees here. Timbers and I, I just can't get the right pronunciation of this guy. But his sister is still in town. They have ten feet to the property line for this location line. There's nothing wrong with us giving them twenty-five feet, which the tree warden recommended. There's nothing wrong with it. We can still, the housing project belongs to the town too. We can say it's a protected area, twenty-five feet around every tree. There's nothing wrong with it.
What you're saying, to the left there, where you said to expand it, Alan just said that is on the town line, so we did not want to encroach beyond that. No.
That line is what Alan is talking about.
I thought it was to the left of that.
But that is
Where the line comes to that line.
But that is the least land of the housing. Yes, if it's impossible, it's impossible. But these two is physically possible.
And the, but lower.
There's nothing wrong, it's a drop-off.
Okay, but Alan is saying the parking lot is there.
There's nothing wrong with having a parking lot in a dedicated area. I'm just saying it stops it from development. And if you go and look at it
But what development are you faring there for those few feet? I mean, what, what would the town put, we're not, we just said we're not gonna, there's not going to be any development there.
Again, I, I would just say, I would like to talk to the bar investors about this.
All right, I'm, that, that's fine, you could, you could, you could absolutely do that. What I'm saying is, there's a parking lot there, you just heard that we're dedicated and there's going to be no, no construction there. So, what is the fear? Again, we're just hearing from Alan saying that that's the parking lot right now. We can't go any further, but nothing's going there. So, you're saying to encroach, to push it beyond there, to stop future development, but we're, we're stopping it here as is right now? So, I don't know why, where you're asking this question.
Well, the question that I'm asking is, if you go over there to the park today, look at it.
Yeah.
This area has a ramp of the old
Yeah.
Old asphalt. This is new asphalt from the rink development in the nineties. This one is full of cracks because of the roots of the tree. If this is part of the parking lot, you can put parking spaces here. Fully in compliance with the resolution. If we draw the line ten feet further down so that we cover the drop-off
So, there'll be no parking space, okay.
There will be no parking space.
Okay, okay, that clears it up, all right.
And we have ample space now. But when we start talking about parking spaces and configuration of parking, if that is parking lot, you can do anything you want. If it is a dedicated area, it's a different story.
Just a question, so if there's parking spaces there, how would that negatively affect the, the Memorial Grove?
You, you, in our talks, you brought up, you wanted to have a plaque, you wanted to have a wall
A little wall with
Something here. Currently, we have a drop-off here for wheelchairs and walkers and stuff like that. It's a, it's a lower ramp, it's lower than here, it's lower than here. This is the ideal, obviously, soft, well-thought-out, well-thought-out drop-off for people who want to go to the memorial. And this is what I'm trying to protect here. So, same with that little green area there. It's roots from the tree. If it is parking lot, it's an improvement on the parking lot, remove it. And you kill twenty-five percent of the roots for this dedicated. So, I'm saying, we have this space. Let's take a moment. We really need to dedicate the area. All the trees are dedicated up through the years, from nineteen forty-six and up. Do we really need to do it? If we really need to do it, let's get input from everybody and add, because there's no way you can take out one of these trees with a fourteen or ten-foot tree underneath those canopies and have any hope that that will grow. But we need an extra space here or extra space here, plant damaged trees or dying trees.
Have you spoken to Dr. Kramer about that at all?
Only thing I've heard, I, I talked to Kramer about it. He talks about twenty-five feet on a thirty-five foot drop line is sufficient. Uh, SLAM
Being from The Godfather, right? Or is it Love Story, I don't know. Anyway, I'm sorry, can I, David? Yes.
Uh, SLAM, as we have seen, suggested fifty feet or seventy-five feet for every tree. When they talked about putting something here, there, or da-da-da-da, they said, we suggest fifty to seventy-five feet radius around each tree.
And Dr. Kramer said how, how much?
Twenty-five is what he suggested when it was in the park with a couple of representatives.
So, so for the hope, for the purpose, if a tree is damaged and we have to replace the tree, if there's too much coverage there, wouldn't be able to grow. So, Dr. Kramer is saying you need twenty-five feet, SLAM was saying you need fifty to seventy-five?
They, they're saying to protect the trees
No?
No, I, I agree with Alan in this point. Kramer hasn't said that you need the twenty-five feet. They were talking about the drip zone from the trees. The current trees are about thirty-five.
Okay.
Even the new tree is already up to a ten-fifteen. So, it was given twenty-five feet to grow up to a decent size. But I'm saying, here you have ten and twenty feet among, between the trees. If you're planting a new tree there, you will never see daylight in the summertime. So, we would have to put them somewhere else. And as I said, one tree was down here with the, with an original
Chester Arthur.
And he was moved up. So, we have this space. We have the time to look at this. Let's put the Neighborhood Association, Pickhamley Association, let's, the town hall together and say, do we really need to do this pink line? Or can we just respect the trees and the black?
Okay, thank you.
SLAM had nothing to do with setting, except for drawing it. We took all the direction from myself and Joseph Sliano and conversations with Silva Cora and Liz and the Kristoff Brothers. Their, on their drawings, the fifty and seventy-five foot ring around the trees was a direction for the skating rink and evaluating rink locations. It has nothing to do with the protection of the trees. And Joe could comment, because Greg Kramer was part of the conversation, we were on site, and he actually wanted twenty feet. So, Joe, you want to?
As I said in my earlier statement, we had the tree warden out there. I mean, Greg is a, you know, has the credentials to make this determination. He said twenty feet. So, if you look at this, and what Mr. Wald is really saying is that the trees that are planted there right now are planted incorrectly, because they don't give that extra I mean, they're planted closely together, so that the canopies are bigger than the bases of the trees. And if you look at all of this, what we're really talking about, outside the drip line, the tree should have been spread out earlier when they were planted, if you really wanted to give that optimum description, as Mr. Wald said. Greg Kramer, professional, you know, an arborist, professional in the, in the area, said twenty feet, we were on site and we did our best to, to, to deal with every one of those so that there was twenty feet for the, for the existence of the trees. To make sure that they can, these are mature, established trees. These are not new seedlings. They're not trees that are going to have to grow into maturity, they are mature. And they will be, you know, and so, so the, so the distance that we've given them and the judgment that Greg has made is, is correct.
Right, so just so going down to address David's concern, if something, one of these trees dies or in a storm is damaged, it could be replanted without being, you know, with the proper light? Okay. I mean, but it, this is going to go to planning and zoning? And certainly, you could ask a lot of questions as it gets to that phase too, but Greg Kramer's a PhD, I'm not. I don't know, I love trees, but I don't know that much about them. So, I'm only going by what they, if he says it is, I mean, if you could Sure. Sure.
I, I guess, just in response to that, I have a question. What's the harm in changing the boundary line of what's going to be designated at the Byram Veterans Memorial Grove if we get to that point? Is there any reason why we shouldn't, as a matter of, just even out the lines?
Well, currently, one reason why we have this little bump in here is that there's electric lines running in there that we have to get to. And we don't want to disturb something that's dedicated. So, we try to keep any of our utilities, curb lines, there's a section of the parking lot that's up, that's up in there. There's curbing that gets up in there, it's right along the curb, part of the sidewalk is in it. We don't want to go back and disturb stuff. We don't want to rip stuff up. So, we're trying to keep things that town needs to get to in undedicated space. And that's why we did that. Because the minute this becomes a straight line and you go in there and dig it up, people will start to complain. And we don't want to have this first selectman or any future first selectman or any selectman have to answer questions about what we're trying to do or maintain. It's just a normal part of our business, that we have to, just like if a tree, a tree did fall, didn't one of the trees come down already and we already replaced it?
And it grew, okay? Okay, as long as it, as long as the concern is addressed, I, I agree, because we don't want to do something here where we find out down the road there wasn't enough space for it to grow. But if it, they are growing and if Dr. Kramer said that, I'm not qualified to, to, to go against that. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, David? Because I, I don't have anything else to go on.
No, no, I, I, I understand you're comfortable. But my question is, from the eight hundred pages that I received from Parks and Rec concerning the parking lot, the electrical wiring goes from this pole, not following over to this one, it goes back here. So, underneath that sidewalk, I'm not, or that pathway, I'm not sure if the wire but it also brought up an issue that I, I think we should think about. You're saying it's going to planning and zoning. I don't think we should waste time with planning and zoning. It would suggestion that neither the veterans or the neighborhood has had an input on. So, that's why I'm saying
Well, are you, I want to make sure you're not speaking for the BNA, they're here. So, Joe and Liz Okay, I want to make sure, because again
No, Byram Neighborhood Association, not, not, not veterans, neighborhood.
And let me just finish there and then joke and then talk about that. It was mentioned here that the rink committee, user committee, is presenting to planning and zoning a pre-approval. As far as I have seen, and I tried to attend most of it, that is only an interior of the building, not a location. So, I'm just surprised that we are talking about here putting forward something to planning and zoning on this area without having input from everybody first, while Parks and Rec are moving forward with planning and zoning on a rink building in the park where nobody knows where it's going to be.
This designation doesn't, has to go to planning and zoning, what we're going to vote on today? Nothing that we're doing today goes to planning and zoning.
This is how I started out this morning. This is a simple fact of right now, even though there's a plaque there, there's a flagpole there, it says Eugene Marlock Park, it doesn't appear on any formal town document. Like, the Board of Selectmen never voted on this in nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-nine? There was no designation that could sit on the land records. So, that's what we're really here asked to do. This whole sidetrack of the ring This whole sidetrack of the rink, where it's going, the proposals, is all secondary information. But it may be important to some, but that's not the purpose of today's request.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Any other questions?
I want to finish up.
Sure.
I walked away before.
Okay.
And we want to hear from the Byram Neighborhood Association.
Yeah.
Right. And we have the Byram Neighborhood.
And we have Liz. Okay.
She's got three designations.
Just a few things. You say, "Why should we be concerned where the line is?" I say, "Why are you concerned with there even being a line?" You shouldn't have to, like I say, we don't have the trees in Bruce Park all mapped out for what's between them, what's under them, how much drip line. It's a park. This is a park. It's 13 and a half acres. You know, you got to get that into your heads. When the park was designated, it was designated as 13.4 acres and then they let the Dorothy Hamel rink have that little spot. And one other thing is, you know, we shouldn't even have to be here discussing this. If this was presented to us right from the beginning that this was going to be a rink renovation in addition at the beginning, that's where money was given, you know, from the RTM, when they approved money, that was what it was for. We only found out one year ago that they took this money and paid architects to place a building somewhere on this 13 and a half acres. That wasn't the intent, and that's why, that's one of the reasons why the BOE pulled the money from this going forward. You know, one year ago, we were only two weeks away, one meeting away, and this park would have been bulldozed. We know that for, we know that.
All right, look, I'm going to stop you there because you keep repeating things that are not true and you're now going into areas, we're not here to discuss the rink. We are here, we're here about this dedication of Morlock Park. So please summarize so we can get on to the Byram Neighborhood. I'm not going to allow you to keep doing the misinformation tour that you've been doing for the last several.
Misinformation.
Yes, exactly.
I could document.
And I resent a lot of the things you've been saying to people about what we're doing and what we're, people are hiding things and the people that work for this town.
I never said they were hiding things.
That volunteer for this town, they need more respect than that. So please summarize so we can get to the Byram Neighborhood Association.
It's funny how you want to not have, not have people talk.
Please go ahead.
How you want not to have people, everything.
I had plenty of time to talk and you've been talking. I'm asking you to summarize so we can get to the Byram Neighborhood Association.
Everything that I have presented or Dave Wald has presented has been documented material, documented. We've had newspaper articles, things at a town hall. Okay, let's, we'll move on. I respect that. You put, you put a person on to be our representative, Nick McRae. We were promised a place on the committee one year ago, right before Christmas time. When we walked out of your office, your words were, "Don, David, Byram vets aren't on the committee. I'll make sure the Byram neighborhood and the Byram vets are on the committee."
And they did.
Two months later, no meetings, we find out that, oh, there's a new, now there's a new committee named and Nick McRae is our representative. Nick McRae is not a veteran. He's not our representative. Why he would be put on to be our spokesperson, but regardless of that, Nick McRae, a planning and zoning person from this town, has never, has never brought us back one piece of information. As a matter of fact, we, when we bring something up to him, he would say, "Oh, where did you find that?" And David would have to show him town documents, town documents. That's how this whole, hate to use the word skating, but that's how this whole park project has been going. The last thing, you know, I want to keep going here. When you do veteran designations, I've been to designations, rededications in Washington, DC, they're done by veterans. The very fact that you want town employees, not even veterans, that are going to come up and say, "Oh yeah, I want to do this. I'm going to dedicate this," you don't do it without the veteran involvement. And this whole project, this whole project has been going on without veteran. This committee right now does not have veteran involvement on it. And, you know, that has to be changed, you know, and I respect Fred, you know, I'm not looking to buckheads, but I understand.
So you got, I promised you the BNA and the Byram Vet member. So we did put two of them on. Now, I know you said if Nick was not a veteran, but he is a member of the organization that his dad is.
Not ours, nope. His dad is, has nothing to do, has nothing to do with Nick.
Okay, I am certainly open to adding another person from your organization. Again, that I have, the more sunshine on the project process is for the better. And that's why I gave you my word and Liz has been on. And so, again, that's not the intent here. The intent is to always, you know, when I did the baseball, Greenwich Baseball Foundation, the first thing we did was go to the BNA. Then we went to the Board of Selectmen and we got that approved. This is well before the Strazza Field dedication. So you always do it with the local neighborhood associations or the organizations that are involved, with their involvement. So I agree with you 100% on that. So, I mean, you could add another person there. I'm okay with that. Again, but no matter what I've done and what the town has done, there's always been some negative feedback and pushback as if somebody is hiding something in these departments, which is not the case.
Yeah, but we haven't received anything. Like I say, the legal, they're moving ahead, Fred. They're moving ahead with this project and yet the legal definitions haven't been answered yet.
I think we're conflating two things. We're here to properly designate a park and the, some of the stuff that you're asking about, and please don't insult me by accusing me of not passing stuff along. I've been passing stuff along ever since you made the comment on Memorial Day that nobody in town hall is listening to you. I've been listening to you. I've been reading the emails, responding and doing the best that I could. And Abby's already expressed where things are going with the documentation. I think unfortunately, we're conflating two different issues. We're here to designate for the land records, the park and the memorial grove, the Byram Veterans Memorial Tree Grove. That's what we're here for. I would rather take all the skating rink stuff and handle that where it needs to be handled.
Okay. Granted, they are interconnecting things, but I understand. So I'll just say in closing here, fine, you want to re-designate Morlock Park, which has clearly been documented, fine, the 13.4 acres, we're all for it. But we definitely are not splitting the trees out of that park. That will not go into this discussion or vote tonight. So that's where I am with, you know, with this.
Thank you.
Retain it where it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Thanks, Don. Okay, Jill?
So thank you for everyone who's spoken so far. I look forward to hearing from the Byram Neighborhood Association as well. And it seems to me, sort of coming into this relatively newly, that the issues are connected in the sense that one raised the other. And so I'm grateful for the attention that was paid by the veterans to the status of the grove, to raise the question of the grove. I was not involved in this procurement, but I can just tell you historically, when you have a procurement, you're going to ask your contractors to propose all different options. And perhaps the town in putting out the RFP wasn't clear that this grove would need to be protected. So that might have triggered the initial confusion with some of the responses. Also, to some of the comments made before, if there was a formal inquiry submitted on whether the trees could be removed, that typically would be recorded in the procurement process with a formal answer. So if that question had come up officially, then there would be a record of it. And I'm sure when one looks back through the procurement files on questions filed, we could find the answer to that if that, if historically, if we want to go backwards, that just is a matter of procurement law. And I, from where I sit, given the history and the back and forth, while I hear the unwillingness to designate the specific area as a protected grove, given that a number of us in the room may not be here in, and participating in 10, 15 years, I do think if we want to protect the grove, there's a value in identifying the boundaries of it. I'll defer to the paid lawyers on this one on whether, but I think parkland, my sense is if the town needs to remove a tree in parkland, whether because it has died or otherwise, or they're reconfiguring a playground, they have the ability and freedom and we've relied on our community largely to protect our trees in town as opposed to restrictive covenants. So I would suggest that if we want to protect this grove, we might want some restrictive covenant. And that, my question was really, what's the, what's the method to do that? I'm going to defer to legal, even though it's my last meeting, I have no problem deferring the conversation on what the meets and bounds description of the protective grove should be. I think there is, there are opportunities to carve out larger space, understanding that there is impacts on town operations when you do that, but that's a conversation to be had. But I would just suggest that we not throw out that solution if our goal is to protect the grove, so.
Thank you, Jill. Okay, Jill and Liz, the floor is yours. Thank you for being so patient.
Talk about a healthy conversation. I'm really welcome. I want to thank, thank, thank all of you for the opportunity to speak. A very simple thing to say. I think the resolution is progress. I think it's a great step forward and the Byram Neighborhood Association supports it very strongly. But I am smart enough to ask Liz Eckert to say a few things, too. Liz?
Thank you, Jill.
The floor is yours.
You see, I do have a last name. It's Eckert. Liz Eckert, Byram Neighborhood Association. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Liz.
So I just want to thank everybody in this room. Everybody spent a lot of time on this and means a lot to me, not only as a Byram resident and Neighborhood Association, but before I was Liz Eckert, I was Liz Arpacy and my brother-in-law Donnie has a tree in this park. So I get a little emotional, got to try to bring it down. You know, I understand that this park was dedicated many, many years ago by Frank Keegan and I appreciate you guys getting that clerical error fixed. I agree with everything that was said today, except one little thing, and it has to do with the expansion of the parking lot. Because at the same time that this park was dedicated, right around the same time, P&amp;Z and Diane Fox agreed to never have any expansion of this blacktop. So, you know, Byram is a really densely populated area. This green space, this park, means so much to our residents because we don't have much green space. And I just ask that the town going forward is really cognizant about that. And, you know, don't pave paradise and put up a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And especially now with all these, with all these big storms coming more frequently, adding asphalt is not the best option. So we'll try and keep the town, with all these applications having more green requirements. So, thank you. Okay. Is there emotion to accept?
So you don't want to defer for, to allow the veterans' associations to bring it back to their membership? What we heard is that they didn't have an opportunity to consult with their, it sounds like the Neighborhood Association did, the veterans.
Well, again, this is, this is just to formally dedicate something that Frank Keegan did in 1989. So I did hear that they were supportive of that, but they were, the issue of the parking lot expansion right in the front there, which we were told is really not great for the town because disturbing something if something goes wrong because of utilities, did I, I got that correct, Alan? I don't really feel comfortable pushing it off.
Long as we're not, we're leaving the memorial grove out of it. Like I say, if we, if you want to move forward with the 13.4 acres, you know, claiming it's not dedicated already, fine. If you want to make that official.
Designated.
Forget about that little painting.
Well, it's, but it's defeating the purpose, right? It's protecting that, too.
No, no.
It is. I disagree with you on that. I mean, let's hear from, you know, the other veterans that are here, the Kristoff Brothers. I mean, I don't understand your opposition to protecting this.
Because you're splitting 0.6 acres out of the original 13.4 and for why?
I don't.
We're identifying, we're identifying the 0.6.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So is your, and there's an expression, "If all you have is a hammer, everything's a nail." Is your idea to dedicate, designate the 13.41303 as the whole veterans' memorial?
No.
Okay, so then what?
By Eugene Morlock Park.
So what, what is the opposition to having a part of it be the Byram Veterans Memorial Tree Grove?
People are going to mistake their names and step up. My, this is really, I'm sorry. This is the issue, this is the reporting.
Sorry.
No, no, you're, just as we go, I see a lot of people out there.
Good, Jill.
So what I'm saying is that you're identifying the 0.6 acres as part of the park, because it is. It's part of Eugene Morlock Park.
That's the thought.
What we're asking for is that it be permanently dedicated, which means that Jill may be right, there may be some other vehicle to do this, but we're putting it in this document so that this would be filed on the land records, voted on by this board, to say that it's going to be permanently documented. It's not going to be parkland slash open space, which is a completely different definition. So what we're saying is that this board recognizes that that area will not and should not be touched going into perpetuity, 0.6 acres.
Which is my thought.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kristoff, how are you?
I'm good. How you doing, Fred?
Good to see you.
It's very emotional for me to be standing here to look back at the years that I spent in Byram all my life. I knew Eugene. I knew Sidekick Paul. The only two custodians that were in Byram School. George Fraser was the principal. I think that finally, all the attention that Eugene should have gotten when he took a selfless act to acknowledge the children that he watched grow up in Byram to plant a grove in their behalf. And it's amazing how you think that people have forgotten those grows, those trees. At one point, they took all the plates off the bottom of the trees. It's like taking a plate off a mausoleum. And my sister-in-law at that time is very active in the RTM, okay? Yeah, parkland named after her because of it and all the work that she's done. And as I was asked by my brother and my sister-in-law to put them back, we backed up the truck to the building and mixed all the concrete and, I'll tell you, share a couple of things with you, and I shared them with Joe and Alan. When I made the forms up to put the footstones back in place, to put the plaques in place, I didn't measure it. I just went to my mother's house, went down to the table saw, cut the forms, came up to the grove and put the first form down onto the remaining part of the footing. It was exactly the same size that was there, all right? As I was putting them back, a fellow from Europe had come jogging through the park. He goes to me, "This is fantastic." He said, "Life through death." And I thought about how brilliant. He saw it as what it was. Through the acknowledgement of the tree and its honor to the soldier it has fallen, they still live on. So we talk about how these trees were planted, the strategy behind it. You know, they say the proof is in the pudding. You know, back in the day when I was going to Byram School, we were doing bomb shelters that were rolling up on the main street for atom bombs, okay? So the proof is in the pudding. 40... Forty-six, they said it's 75 years, right? Sycamores are still there, still growing strong, regardless of how they're planted. The outlining tree of the guys that are in NOM, Sylvester Pecora's brother Joey and Donald Repacy, was the only tree that's fallen in the 75 years that the grove was there. So much ado about nothing. I like the idea that we're finally getting it put in place where it should be, all right? I could go on, but I'm not going to. I'm just making a clear fact that the proof is in the pudding, those trees are still there. The intent of what it was supposed to be for is still there. Whether it belongs to the Barm Vets, whether it belongs to the Veteran Society, doesn't matter. The fact that the trees are there and the plaque are in place, through the diligence of other people, is all you really need to know. And it requires to be taken and protected, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I just add to that quick? Just one second.
Sure. No, thanks, Bob. I know, you know, I know Bob Kristoff. And I'd just like to say, for the same reason like Bob has just said, protect the trees for Eugene Morlot. When they put that flagpole and that stone and that plaque on it, that was dedicating that field, the field in the open area and the parking lot for Eugene Morlot Park also. So, you know, just saying, yeah, we're going to protect the trees because that's what Eugene Morlot wanted. No, that pole, that flagpole was put in the center of the park, and that was put in honor of Eugene Morlot. So, you know, let's, you know, let's not overlook, you know, the significance of where that pole is and Eugene Morlot. Yes, Eugene Morlot, they started the trees, they planted the trees, the school did. But when they dedicated, when they put that flagpole, they were dedicating that whole park to, and that's my point, is not splitting the memorial grove out of the park. Nobody's going to go into that park and start digging holes, just like nobody's going to go into the center of Benny Park or Bruce Park and start doing something. Parks are pretty much protected. And, look, the park has been protected, I think I said this earlier, the park has been protected for more than 50 years. Why now, all of a sudden? The only, the only threat to that park, the only threat, has been the town for wanting to do this rink project. So anyway, thanks, and let me end this. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. For the last time, the floor recognizes David Wald.
Thank you.
You're getting your steps in today.
Moral is a question to Hart and Rick. And just, I do respect a lot what the Kristoff family did. And I would like to talk to you more about what she did in the community. But you, Fred, remember the Grand Army of the Republic, the tree in front of Board of Ed, which was cut down, but the plaque remained? And if we go ahead and do this geographical odd shape to protect the trees, and as was explained by Joseph Leano, that we have now the GPS location of each tree, would that lock it down so that each tree can only be planted and replanted in that location? Or are we doing a park and we can rotate the 13 trees within that? And I think, if it has to be, it has to be. But I think that opens up for a lot of discussions as to World War I monument, World War II monument, the Civil War, et cetera. So I gladly take that discussion.
Okay, yeah, okay. I appreciate that. I, my understanding is, and Joe will confirm it, that the, the trees, if they go down, there's enough room for them to be replanted and they'll get the light, correct, Joe?
Correct.
In that same spot?
Correct.
Yeah, that's where, that's what Greg, Dr. Kramer was saying, about needing 20 or 25 feet to be able to grow and not be blocked in, right?
Well, I mean, as Joe said, they were planted wrong. So my question is, if they were.
Thank you. Get arborist license now.
If they're supposed to be 25 feet, there's like six of them that can't.
Yeah, I'm not qualified to overrule Dr. Kramer. Honestly, I.
Let's, let's do one acre.
So, so this is, I want to, I'm going to say this, because the trees, if there is a damaged tree and we had to move it, we can move it within the pink area. I mean, if we had to replace one, okay? So it's, it's not that, that's not what we're saying.
It wouldn't go in the exact same spot, or?
Well, I mean, you don't want to really put it, but you put it as close to the exact same spot as you can, okay? But this is a quote from Frank Keegan in a 1985 memo that he wrote. "The area where the plaques are located have been dedicated as permanent parkland." That's exactly what we're asking for today. The area where the park, where the plaques are located, is, has been dedicated as permanent parkland. This was in his memo he wrote. So we're just trying to accomplish this by saying, this area where the plaques are has been dedicated permanent parkland. It is not other parkland. And so the reason why we're asking for that permanency is so that it can never be reversed, or it would take some kind of act of another Board of Selectmen to say that we're going to change that dedication. But right now, there's nothing here that even gives this a park dedication. It's just a plaque in the park with a flagpole that never had a follow-up on it.
Okay. Mr. Pecora, Mr. Pecora had his hand up first, back there.
Can I, can I just ask Joe a question on that? Why are we not designating the entire Morlot Park as permanent parkland?
Because we have, we have other functions there, I mean.
But can't you have other functions at a park?
Because once you dedicate it permanently, it limits the amount of functions that you can have there. I mean, if we wanted to change the parking lot, if we wanted to move the ball field to a different location within the park, that all changes the designation.
So Byram, Byram Park, right? Is that permanent parkland? No. Okay.
So we built a swimming pool there.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
I mean, so what we're saying is that for this conversation and the intent of Keegan's memo right here, make that permanent, so that that section of this park could never be altered without some other act of a Board of Selectmen or some, some other act somewhere. But we're trying to, we're trying to follow up with his intent.
And can I ask a question, because I'm confused, because I feel like I'm hearing what the veteran's saying is there's no need to wall off and designate that area. There's just no need. But what's the alternative? Like, I don't understand.
Well, the alternative is all open as open, it's open as parkland and open space. That's the designation right now. So what we're saying is that in order to.
So what's the benefit of, for the veterans to leave it that way?
What's the benefit? There isn't. Actually, there's less of a benefit to protect the grove, okay? This designation of permanency will protect the grove.
Okay, let's give Mr. Pecora a chance here, and then we'd like to, I know we have a special executive session that's already half hour over.
I'm sorry, but.
It's okay.
Liz and I are the only two survivors of two of the trees that are dedicated for my brother and her relative. That grove, we want it protected. I think we got it protected the way Joe and Alan had, had provided. We both agree that that should be done. You know, a lot of people make a lot of joint efforts of what they want and what they don't want, but it's, really comes down to the relatives of that grove. Mr. Kristoff got up and spoke before about many years ago, when the 9th District Vets thought they were doing us a favor by, because they were building the Barm School into a housing, and they thought they were going to take the trees down. And what they did is they took all the plaques out to save them. I went, I went out of my mind with Ann, and we got them back. So this is the reason for this. I sat with Joe, we determined the line. The line is 20 feet around each tree. We discussed it. He brought it forward, forward. He did it. Alan protected the, the parking lot. I don't know what more discussion you need on this. I hope you go forward with what Joe and Alan have said and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. You summarized it perfectly. I think that's, we've had, I think that we've heard enough, but we're not going to go back and forth. Really, that sums up.
I would just like to clarify what Joe said about the dedication from 85.
All right, make, this is the last, because we do have to get going, David.
From my research, and I don't understand how Frank Keegan in 85 could refer to an area that he dedicated in 89. But anyway, if we look at the town history, it says repeatedly up until the 80s that the trees were dedicated. Board of Ed dedicated the trees, not any area. First Selectwoman, Ruth Sims, dedicated to protect open space in Byram in 79, that park. She repeats it in the oral history found in the library, that that was the purpose of dedicating the park. That was in 79, so that was what Frank Keegan was referring to. Frank Keegan was not referring to the 13 trees that had been dedicated about 20 years earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, is, do we have a motion?
Yes. Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the Eugene Morlot, Morlot Memorial Park naming resolution as indicated in our packet with the addition of adding Byram in front of the Veterans Memorial Tree Grove.
Is there a second? I will second it. All those in favor? Fred Camilloza, yes?
So I would have, this is Jill Oberlander. I would have preferred to defer this item. I'm a little confused by the back and forths. We have representatives from the veterans' organizations asking us not to specifically define a grove. We have representatives from the neighborhood saying they want to protect the green space. We have a provision that restricts building on top of the parking lot, although no restriction on an expansion of the parking lot in other dimensions. And I'm not 100% sure right now, having been, just learned that this is not permanently restricted parkland, why we're not restricting the entire 13-plus acres as permanently restricted parkland, subject to the existing uses already on the site, which would seem to allow for the renovation of the rink and the protection of the baseball fields or other play restrictions. So despite having received numerous emails about this topic over the last several months, thinking that I would be in 100% agreement, I find that I have, I'm not 100% comfortable to vote the same page before we vote. I think taking an action that leads, leads to further dissent, let's just call it, amongst our community is not constructive for what we're trying to accomplish. So I'm going to vote, not because I'm opposed to naming it, I understand that this is the Eugene Morlot Memorial Park, very happy to learn both about his contributions and also more about the members of our community who gave their lives. And I think it's really important that we reach a better resolution than where we are right now. So I'm voting no.
Thank you. And Lauren?
Yes. Lauren Raven, yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. So it passes 2 to 1, and we, again, we've heard from veterans, from the Neighborhood Association, from the only surviving relatives of people here. This is a very popular decision. You're never going, I found, as older I get, you're never going to get 100%. And questions are a good thing, but certainly, you know, this is, Joe, we answered, I think, very well the question about dedicating other parts of it, and the reason why we're doing this one, this .6 acres of the 13.4. So we're happy and really grateful for all that, you know, weighed in on this and all the work that went into it, and then to bring some permanency to this and to, to protect it, so we don't have a situation like Mr. Pecora said, where somebody well intentioned went in there trying to pull plaques out and tear the trees down. And, you know, that can never happen now. So I thank everybody for that. And seeing no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved. Jill Oberlander, second.
All those in favor? Fred Camilloza, yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes. Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great day. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks for everything, Jill.